This is the August 17th, 2021, meeting of the Acushnet Public Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped, and we do have a quorum. Our first item of business today is the secretary's report from July 13th. Does anyone have any clarifications or questions on those minutes? Okay, if not, we need a motion.
Motion except for minutes?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is the budget. So up in the salary line, you'll see we're 12% spent out. We've had a few pay periods, you know, so far into the same fiscal year. And so that's correctly reflected in the salary line. We've had two staff members who had reached their longevity already this year. So that's why you're seeing that we're 41% spent out on the longevity line. And I just would like to comment that that's Sandra Mederos, who has 10 years, and Leslie Perkins at five years. So congratulations to them both. And I thank them very much. I'd be lost without the two of them. Well, I'd be lost without most, all of them. But they've been here the longest, so they just, they've got the history of the place. And then when we move to operating, you'll see we're already 44.4% spent out. But don't be alarmed. I always try to remind you at this time of the fiscal year that some of the lines are already spent out, and that's normal at this time. But I'll just highlight a few lines. In energy, we've had two Eversource bills so far. And the expenditure for that line so far is pretty much in line where we've been at past fiscal years. So we're, you know, we're paying about the same with Eversource. The tech support line, that's the annual sales fee for tech support, and that's completely spent out because we get that bill in July. For the sales line, which is our sales membership fee, that bill came in at about $1,400 less than they had estimated, and that's due to a COVID grant. The same thing happened last fiscal year. I don't anticipate, sales does not anticipate that that will happen again. But now for two years, they've been able to help out and reduce payments. So we will use that overage to supplement our materials line, which is what we did last year also. Because that is the line that's taken the biggest cut over the past couple of years. The office supplies line, you'll see, is already 41% spent out. And that's because we've already bought printer paper for the entire year. We didn't have to buy any printer paper in FY '21 because we had purchased a large amount in FY '20. So we didn't have that expense in FY '21. But now we should be all set for this fiscal year. We've also recently had to replenish our ink supply, our receipt paper rolls for the fiscal year. So we've done some spending that will hopefully carry us through the remainder of the year, which is why we're already at 41% spendout. And then the materials line is just over 30% spent out. And again, that's a large chunk of money we've expended so far. But that includes our annual magazine subscription contract, which is just over $2,000. And we also needed to add some content credit on overdrive because the demand for e-material has not dropped yet. So we needed to do a big push for that for the summer, to actually supplement summer reading. So all that said, I think we're in a good spot. And unless you have any other specific questions about it, that about sums it up for so far. I don't have any questions. Anyone else?
No question.
No? All right, we need a motion? Except for the budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I agree. Okay, next on the agenda for new business, we have the annual ARIS report. So just as a reminder, the ARIS report is the first of two reports for the state aid program. The ARIS report focuses on statistics. And it's, surprisingly, it's not like as bad as I expected it to be. You know, we see the statistics monthly, but once you actually compare them as a whole to the previous year, I expected to be like crushed with the drop in circulation. And it's really not too terrible. So I just, I want to start by saying that. But we backpedal a little. We also have to account for our holdings within this report. And our collection count is roughly the same size as it was in FY '20. This report's focusing on FY '21. So it's roughly the same size as FY '20. But we do have about 2,000 more books. And I think that because we didn't do a lot of reading in fiscal year '21, so maybe this year, if we get back to reading a little bit more, then that might bring the collection count. Because our collection count usually hovers around 22,000. And right now, total collection is at 23,200 volumes. So that, we may see a change next year. But for now, I think that we're pretty good where we're at. And then before I get into physical stuff, the use of electronic collections continue to increase. That's up 15%. So we were already seeing an increase for that in FY '20. But now we've seen an even bigger increase in FY '21. And for some people, I think that's just become their primary way of using the library. So I think we'll either see that level off or we'll see it continue to increase. But I don't think we're going to see a drop at this point in circulation of electronic material. But in terms of the physical material, like I said, it's not that bad. Like, here's a good example of not that bad. The adult circulation for books. In FY '20, we circulated 18,117 books. Now, we were only open for nine months of that fiscal year because we closed in March. And then we didn't open for takeout until June. So from March 16th to June 11th, no one was borrowing anything. So the circ was lower than usual, but still respectable. And then in FY '21, when we were primarily only open for takeout, and then we opened by appointment in March, but that was still slim use. But the adult circulation was 16,050. So that's about 2,000 less than the previous year without really being open for people to come in and browse and pick out things themselves. So I thought that was pretty impressive, actually. And I think it speaks to how well the takeout system worked and how people were really utilizing that. So I thought that was neat to see. When you look at children's circulation, that dropped about 70%. But I think the reasoning for that is because, and I'll give you some numbers, but I think the reason is when people come in to browse with kids, they're leaving here, some families with 20, 30, 40 books at a time. And they come every two weeks, and they're taking out these piles of books. When we were doing takeout, you know, people were only maybe taking five to 10 books. They weren't taking, you know, some families were still taking, yes, you know, they filled out the form and we'll take up to 20. Or, you know, now we're comfortable with 20, give us 25. Which we were seeing that, but certainly not in the same way as we do when we are normally open for people to come in. So in FY '20, the children's book circulation was 31,126 books. In FY '21, it was 18,672. So like a 70% drop, just about. I think, you know, this summer, we've quickly been reminded how people take those stacks. It's been fun trying to figure out how to get those stacks under the plexiglass and have best to divide them up to get them under the glass. So people are starting to borrow in large quantity again. So hopefully, we see a nice increase in FY '22. And eventually, hopefully, we'll get back to our old numbers. So far, it seems like we're on that track, so that's good. Total circulation of physical material was in FY '20 was 73,524 items. And then in FY '22 was 50,852, so about a 40% drop. And again, I think that we're, it's because of the children's collection and the way it is used. So it's hard after we've worked so hard and we've seen our circulation grow so much since moving here in 2015. It's hard to see that and to see those drops. However, the practical side of the brain knows that it was just, you know, a victim of the circumstances. And we'll get that. How it's going to affect our state aid payment, no one knows that yet. The other big piece of the state aid payment is that our non-resident circulation dropped also about 70%. And non-resident circulation is a big piece of the state aid award. And we have so many residents who use, I mean, we have, obviously, our highest circulation is to Acushnet residents, but we have so many residents of New Bedford, especially the North End, for Haven, you know, the whole surrounding communities. We have so many who come in. And so our non-resident circulation has been very high since moving here. And it's dropped, like I said, about 70%. So we had in FY '20, 26,356 items. And in FY '21, 14,846. And I think, you know, that's because people couldn't come in the building. We weren't doing programs, which was bringing, you know, bringing in people from other communities. So again, I'm sure this is going to change, but that may have an impact on our state aid award for this year. And we won't know that until they announce state aid, which won't be until around December. Hopefully, it's not too bad. Last year's award was our biggest to date, and that was really because of our non-resident circulation. So, because I think that was our highest ever non-resident circulation. So we'll see what happens. And also, we learned they are not counting takeout as hours opened. And they're not counting by appointment visits as hours opened. They're only counting when the building was open for people to come in freely. So we were not open for people to come in freely until May 29th of 2021, when the, gosh, what the heck, the state of emergency. So how that's going to impact us either, I don't know. There are other sections of the reports where we are reporting what we did in takeout and reporting what we did by appointment, but they are not counting it on the federal level as hours that we were open. So, I mean, we're not alone in this. Most libraries were not open. They know that this is, you know, a concern to all of us, but hopefully, it doesn't have a rough impact. So just so you're up to speed on all of that, so especially when that state aid award comes in. If I come crying, you'll know. You'll know why. So up next is the financial report. I've already started working on that. I unexpectedly had to be here for a few hours on Saturday. But it was fairly quiet, so I was able to do a little working on the financial report. To get started on that, it's due October 1st, but I hope to have it done by our September meeting. So we can just put it behind us. And I think we're really good. We spent everything we were required to spend and all that. So we should, the financial report should be much easier. But other than that, I'm going to have Jen sign off on it today. I'm going to, I've already submitted, I submitted it last night. I'll have Jen sign off on the confirmation form today. And then I'll send that off to the state, and we should be all set. Sounds good?
Yeah.
Unless anyone has any questions. That was it. Anyone? Anybody? Okay, next on the agenda, the discussion on resuming indoor programming. I'm not really looking to make any decisions or have you make any decisions today. I just more so wanted to get an idea of how you're feeling about resuming indoor programs. I referred back to our reopening plan, which, you know, when it discusses what a full-scale reopening means, it talks about when the stay-at-home advisory has been lifted and when protocols regarding social distancing and a limit on gatherings are lifted, which the limit on gatherings for our place, our site, has been lifted. But protocols regarding social distancing are still very, like, this was written before, you know, this was written in, like, May of 2020, when this was all very new to us. So I didn't get a lot of help by looking back at our reopening plan. And then in the section on programs, it talks about, you know, suspending all in-person programs until at least September 2020. And we're almost at September 2020. And the use of the community room, which is where we hold our indoor programs primarily, it talks, we talked about suspending until further notice, no matter what stage the library is in. So we're in the full-scale reopening stage. But obviously, we haven't resumed programs in the community room aside from your meetings. We have allowed, because we also comment on the study rooms in the same sentence, we have let people use the study rooms. The demand for the study rooms when we, like, at the start of summer was pretty high. Now, maybe one person a week asks to use a room, and they're by themselves. It's not like there's a group meeting in there. It's one person who just needs a quiet place to sit. And it's, last week was one time. The week before that was maybe two times. So that seems, whatever, wherever there was interest at the beginning of summer and now there really isn't, who knows? But anyway, more to the point is that figuring out what do we do about programs in this room. As of last Friday, Acushnet's percent of positivity rate, 6.22%, which is still fairly high for where we're at and concerning. We might want to say that if we're going to resume indoor programs, we need to be at at least like 1% within this community for a certain amount of time before we resume the programs. I don't know. That's just notes I was jotting down before coming in. But I can say, I mean, some of the staff have done some outdoor programs this summer, have led those. I don't think our staff, and I, when I say that, myself included, no one wants to lead a program in this room right now, especially if the program is targeted to a demographic that doesn't have the option to get vaccinated, i.e., you know, preschool storytime. Is that a great idea, to have 20 to 30 people in this room when half of those people aren't vaccinated? Probably not, but maybe you feel differently. That's, you know, I can say that, I'm pretty sure that's how we feel. But whatever we decide, obviously, it's the board's decision, and we'll follow along with what it is that you're thinking. Nancy couldn't be with us today, but she did say in an email last week that she thinks it's best to postpone indoor programming right now. She wrote, "The numbers are surely getting scary, and human staff need to be protected." And that's really what my concern is, is that if we did a program and then everyone had, you know, all the staff had to go quarantine, we'd have to shut the library down. So that's another piece to keep in mind. So I don't know if anyone has anything to add. Again, I don't think you need to vote on anything today. I think we just need to be having this. Because at some point, someone is going to ask why we aren't doing programs in here. And at some point, it's going to get too cold to do storytime outside or for the book groups to meet outside. And so I think we just need to be prepared for when that happens.
I agree with you, Rachel, but Nancy elaborated on what you just explained. I don't know about a number.
Right.
I don't know if there is a number. I follow it, but I'm not sure. In general, I don't think a program is safe. I don't know what that is.
Right.
I agree. I don't know that you could put, I mean, I know the Acushnet statistics, but we're not just, we don't just have Acushnet residents. So, I mean, and it's not broken down to say the North End of New Bedford or the Lakeville or, you know, whatever.
Right, and there's no way to know who's in here.
Right, and so, I mean, Acushnet could be down to 1% and New Bedford could be up to 20. I mean, and then, so I don't know that we want to, you know, like Steve said, I don't know that we want to target that.
Right. Steve, the reason why I was suggesting that is just because other, I mean, this could be five years from now at this point. We don't know when this is going to end.
Right.
So at some point, though, you have to draw some sort of a line that says, okay, well, we've got to move forward with this at some point. I don't think right now is the time to move forward with it, but at some point, we will. And I worry, if we don't have any parameter in place, then people, I think, might really start to, well, why don't you have any, anything in place that you're looking at, you know?
I mean, do you do like Acushnet in the surrounding towns? Like, do you know what I mean? Like, who, you, is there a way for you to tell, like, okay, we have people from Lakeville, Rochester, New Bedford?
We don't, I mean, we basically, we'd be looking, I think, at the entire southeastern Massachusetts, you know, numbers, which we could do.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, you know, just trying to.
Or if it's based on county, if you're looking at Bristol County, it's not looking at individual communities, but the county numbers, maybe? Like, that's a possible option. Because people probably are coming from outside of Bristol County, you know?
Right. I mean, and if they do, it's probably very few and far between.
Right.
I think you can do the preschool through October.
Outside, right.
But then any other programs, are adults starting to come into your room? I wouldn't think you'd have that many people at your desk.
I don't know. We're already getting questions about that with people, you know? And then, and some other libraries in the area are already offering, you know, indoor meeting space. And I think bigger libraries in the area. And that's fine if that's what they want to do and what their participants want to do. But I don't know how you, you know, I don't know if those are also locations that have full-time custodial staff who immediately come in a room and disinfect it or, we don't have that here. Like, so that's not an option for us.
Circulation questions.
Right. Correct, correct. So, like, we're going to push the outdoor programming for as long as we can. Like, if we got a couple of miles Wednesdays in October and people still wanted to come out, well, great. All right, you put on a coat, and if you're running land out there, you know, it might be okay. But, right, I mean, you know, there's one book group that meets in the evening. They haven't asked to meet indoors yet, but they, you know, meet in the evening. Eventually, it might get dark before it even gets cold on them.
I mean, how many people are in the book group?
There's like a dozen. I mean, do they all come to the meeting? No, I mean, it's going to miss, like, some times. And that was like that pre-COVID, you know, there might be eight of them here, but the next month, there's 10, or the next month, there's four. It depends on what.
Right.
We would never know that, like, until the meeting.
I mean, I'm just thinking where you're having a program where, like you said, where it's, you know, 30 kids in here. Well, no, you don't want to do that. But I mean, a book group, I mean, you could, you can sit six feet apart with 12 people in here and have no problem. So do you, do you just limit it to that? I mean, just, I'm just, not that I'm necessarily for or against it. I'm just throwing out, you know, kind of ideas. Like, okay, we're talking about a group of, we would hope would be responsible adults who are not going to get on top of each other like kids are, you know, touching everything. They're going to be, you know, in their own space, just a thought.
Right.
But.
And I see that side of it, sure. I just, I do worry that if we start doing it for one group, then another group is going to wonder why, you know, why aren't you doing it for us? Or if there's an outside, I mean, this room used to be borrowed by, you know, non-library sanctioned programs. And we don't have, you know, they, do they have to follow a, you know, policy that you all have approved? Yes, they do. But what they're doing in here, we don't, we don't really know what they're doing in here. Or they might tell us, five people are coming, but, oh, well, now we have, you know, a dozen or more. Like, we, we don't, we can't control it. So then I just worry that then, you know, I, to me, it's all, my thought is it's all or nothing. Either we're doing programs for everybody or we're not doing indoor programming at all. Like, that's how I feel about it right now.
I think in that regard, you'll probably be stuck with the no program until such time as you're going to get kids vaccinated. I think that's what you're going to be stuck with because until they lower that age and people actually go, you know, can go or have the opportunity to go, I think that, unfortunately, I think that's what you're going to. Because even if the cases increase, I mean, the cases decrease, you're still going to have that group of people that are just always vulnerable.
Right.
So, but like you said, it's something to think about.
Right. Yeah, it's just to more have it on, I think, also, so that it's not a surprise if we, if I ask, you know, if I come up with some sort of a policy or some, you know, temporary policy that you would approve, that at least we've had some discussion about it.
Right.
For us, you know, that's, and if you think we do something that, you know, if it's a group of, I mean, obviously, right now, we've stored a lot here, so we also have to figure out where we would store the stuff that's here that doesn't really have another place in the building. But if we moved this stuff out, I mean, you could easily have 10 or 12 people spread out here. So I mean, certainly, if that's something that you wanted, you know, to decide on to do, we could have that as an option. And then it's entirely up to an individual as to whether or not they would like to come. They would like to come anyway.
Right, I mean, you, right, you would say, I mean, people may be happy with just the outdoors, and then once you go inside, they may be like, you know what, I'm outside. I don't want to wear a mask or I don't want to do, you know, whatever. I don't want to be around people, you know, that kind of thing. So who knows?
Right.
And I think it's going to, I think people's opinions might even change as times have gone. I mean, people's opinions have changed from the beginning of the summer till now.
Right.
So I think, but it's definitely good to have the discussions, I think. So we should definitely put this on, well, to obviously table the issue, no votes. And we'll, we'll put it on next meeting's agenda.
And depending on the timing of that, there may or may not be, probably it might even end up on the following meeting's agenda.
Well, no, yeah, oh, yeah, but I think it should continue to be on the agenda.
Definitely. I mean, there might not be a policy.
No, no, oh, no, no, no. But I think it should just, the idea of the discussion should continue to be. And I think we should, we should be revisiting it. Even if it's six months from now, we should still be revisiting as things change, because this whole situation's fluid.
But it sounds good. Everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
All right. Sounds good. The director's report. So we're wrapping up summer reading between the kids and the teens and adults who participate through the Beans app. They've logged over 38,000 minutes of reading this summer, so that's pretty cool. I was looking back on some notes from maybe like six years ago, maybe the first summer I was here. And I think they were doing paper logs at the time, but we had estimated 3,000 minutes of reading. So it's come a long way. And, which is good. But I think the summer, I think, has been really successful. I think people have been happy with what we've offered, even if it's not nearly as much as we normally do in the summer. We're still doing those weekly crafts. We still did the beads this summer. We did these two, which I'm sure you've all seen by now, but the mystery poster puzzle challenges. And I think a lot of people have really enjoyed coming in to put stickers on the mystery puzzles. And we're looking into doing something like that in the winter so that people have something to look forward to when they come in. So that's all gone really well. The outdoor storytime that we've spoken about, that's gone so well that we are going to run the fall session. Like we said, that officially starts on September 1st. And it will run through September with the possibility of extending it into October, weather dependent. So that's Wednesdays at 10:30. Let's see, I've now taken part in about seven or eight Zoom sessions with some email discussions regarding best practices and policies for the hotspots that we received through the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. They got the hotspots with federal funding. We received our five in the beginning of August. As of today, only three are working correctly. Two of them still are not functioning correctly. I felt much better last Friday when one of the MBLC reps said that this is a lot more than they had expected. I felt much better. There's two different portals we have to access. The hotspots are teen mobile hotspots. The hotspots are T-Mobile hotspots, so we have to access a T-Mobile portal, and then we have to also access another portal for the filtering software that had to be put on the devices because they were purchased with federal money. So the federal government requires, sorry about that, requires that we use filtering. So the two portals aren't speaking to each other or aren't speaking to the two devices that aren't working correctly. So I hope to solve that this week. I sent some more instructions, so I hope to get that settled. And I hope to get a policy draft ready for you. My goodness, I sent this off for the next meeting. And I hope to start circulating them by mid-September, so a little less than a month from now is when we're, the target date. But who would have thought this would be so complicated? The MBLC certainly didn't, and I certainly didn't. But, well, we should have them going soon. And like I said, I will have that policy draft ready for your approval at our next meeting. Oh, next Wednesday, August 25th at 11:00 a.m., we have Henry the Juggler performing out on our front lawn. This program is sponsored by the Acushnet Cultural Council. We didn't apply for this grant, the performer did, and once he received it, he needed a location. So he reached out to us and asked if we were interested, and yes, we are. So as of today, we do have about 50 people registered. My director's report says 40, but we have more people who are registered since it was announced in the newsletter this week. If anyone watching is interested in registering, if you go to the library's website, acupl.org, you click on the calendar link, scroll down for Henry the Juggler, August 25th. There's a link to a Google form within the calendar post, and you just register through the Google form. We just wanted to have ballpark ideas as to how many people to expect that day, so that's why we did the registration. But I think that'll be a nice turnout, and we're looking forward to that. And again, thank you to the Acushnet Cultural Council for sponsoring the program. As you know, we're back to our staff at 10, which is great news. We did have a library tech too join us on August 9th. Her name is Keeney Martin. She has previous sales network experience, which is wonderful, because there's a lot she already knows the basics of. I've trained two new people from scratch, obviously with other staff's help, but I've spent a lot of time doing that over the past few months. And so it's been a relief to have somebody who knows at least the basics with getting started. So that's been wonderful. Other than that... Oh, as you can see, the work continues on the pavilion on the back lawn. I think that's been a little delayed, but is that a surprise? No, it'll be wonderful when it's done, and we'll all be so happy and we'll forget it was a little delayed. I didn't think August 2nd was a realistic date when I was first told that, but maybe we'll get to do a few things in it this year before, while we're still doing outdoor programming. But quickly, I just wanted to talk about the July circulation. I know we've already discussed statistics a lot today, but for July 2021, we circulated 7,314 physical items for a total of 8,050 items. And that's when we factor in the eBooks and e-audiobooks, way up from last July, obviously, which is great. And when I prepared the July 2021, other Julies, I was actually surprised to discover that July 2021 was our second highest month for circulation since 2015, which is when I came on board. I could see the circ stats before that, but obviously, they were nowhere close to what they are now when we were at the old building. Like, in 2015, when we were still at the old building, in July, we circulated 3,811 items. And this month, excuse me, this July, was 8,050. So we've certainly come a long way. I found it interesting that this was our second highest July circ in recent history. I found it most interesting because we didn't really do that much for programming. And in some years past, we've, you know, had two programs a day, you know, two or three days a week. So it was a surprise to see that so many people have been coming in and not, we sometimes think it's the pull of programming that brings people in, and that's certainly part of it, but I think people are just happy to be able to come in here and to be able to borrow what they would like. So our highest July circulation to date was in 2019, and that was 10,451 items. And now we're at 8,050, so not that far off, which I think is pretty great. We do have people starting to come back in to use the computers. I'll have a count for you for August, so that you can get a sense of how many people are coming in. We're not seeing nearly as many people come in to use the computers as we were pre-COVID, but they are still coming, mostly to just pop in really quick to print something and then to go. So I think that the being, the driving force for them being here is because they need a printer, more than the computer itself. And our manual count was just over 1,800 people coming in in July, which was exciting to see after, you know, last summer not having anybody walk in the building at all. So the staff has really been enjoying that. Everyone's, you know, sort of come to me to say how great it is to have people in the building. And of course, that's, they're 100% correct, so. Other than that, that's it. Okay? Anybody have anything else? Everybody's good? You want to set things easy? I'm hoping we can meet earlier in September than, rather than later, mainly because of this hotspot policy approval that I'll be looking for before we can circulate them. So my first suggestion is Tuesday, September 7th at 4:00 p.m., if possible.
I can do that, if that works.
It's funny, I was just going to say, I do have something, but I think at 2:00 I'm 40.
Okay.
Quite sure I can make that.
So you can make four, okay. That's good, that's good.
Okay, that's good for you.
Okay, and I'll send an email to Diane and Nancy just to make sure. And if they both have a conflict, then I'll put out some alternate dates, just so that, you know, we can try to get as many of you here as possible. So that'd be great, so September 7th, 4 o'clock. Thank you. And I will have the hotspot policy, they will all be working. And yeah, we can continue talking about indoor programming and see where, see where we're at. Okay, awesome. All right, if that's it, we need a motion.
Motion, agree.
All in favor? This August 17th, 2021, meeting of the Acushnet Public Library Board of Trustees is officially adjourned. It is 4:39. Thank you.